Board, please put your name in the chat and Janet Testa will call on you. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment?
Seeing no one.
Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to the board meeting minutes and I would entertain a motion to adopt, to approve the March 10th, 2021 minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Mark seconded by Elda. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please Janet.
He's working on her audio.
Okay.
Here's Tracy.
Dr. Cabana Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
I don't see, I don't see her.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you.
So that motion passed. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 17th, 2021 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Brendan, Brendan made the motion seconded by Paula, who's disguising herself as Bruce. Oops. That's okay. I will take a roll call vote. Oh, is there any discussion?
I just want to say Paula had me fooled.
Oh, thanks. Thanks, Mark.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Cabana Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm just looking to see if Ms. Lambert joined us, but not yet.
No, she's just texting me now. She's having problems. That's why I'm being rude and looking at my phone. She can't seem. She's, I'm just asking her what the problem is. So she isn't here yet.
Thank you.
I'm in.
Oh, you're in? Oh, good.
I'm trying, sorry.
It's okay. We're just texting. We're just voting on the March 17th minutes. Would you like to vote or do you want to abstain, Tracy?
No, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we done?
Yes.
Janet. Yes, okay, great. So what we're going to do now is we're going to move on to the superintendent's report. I just want to use the privilege of the chair to do two things. One is to, you know, many people know that Brendan O'Neill recently joined the board and I just want to make it official tonight that Brendan and I have spoken and he would like to serve on your committee, Tracy Lambert, the school planning and design. So you have a new official committee member, but people should also know that people on the board also know they can attend any of the meetings and participate in any of the meetings. So but thank you Brendan for stepping up to that.
Thank you.
And I also want to just say that it's been raised with me, especially if you're not participating via video, it is very hard to follow discussion if we're jumping in and out during presentations with questions back and forth. And so what we're going to try tonight is we're going to have, like, for example, when Dr. Youngberg gives her, her update on COVID, we're going to let her run through the update and then ask questions. Okay, folks, we're going to try that tonight, see how it works. So I know you're in the habit, Dr. Youngberg, of stopping and asking if people have questions. We're just going to wait until the end, okay?
The teacher and me, but I got it.
So we're going to hand over to the superintendent for reports.
All right. So we're going to start off with some celebrations. And first of all, I want to say that the one thing I can say is, is really a positive of this whole virtual world that we're now in is the participation at these meetings is amazing. So I just want to shout out to all the staff members and my leadership team that are on here tonight. I'm going to share my screen, show you some of the district celebrations. And hopefully, if all goes well, you are looking at something that says district celebrations.
We are.
Good. Okay. First, just a shout out to the students. I know you can't see their names in this tiny type, but this was in the Chronicle. These are all the students who have made high honors, honor roll or high honors for the marking period number two. So congratulations to all those high school students who are working hard despite very strange circumstances. So also have to shout out to this young man, a senior who has decided to start his own clothing line, little bit of an entrepreneur, very impressive. So we'll be watching that and see how that plays out in years to come. But hey, taking on something like that in your senior year is pretty impressive all by itself. In the area of impressive, another one, Senior Isabel Perez has moved on in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So we'll be watching that as well. She's a finalist. I want to shout out to North Wyndham School. They participated in a training for the LGBTQIA awareness and advocacy within their classrooms so that, and I know there's a bunch of them on the call right now. So congratulations to them for being a part of that. We want to say a big thank you to the Essential Superheroes. You've probably seen the Essential Superheroes putting up signs all over on, in, to different organizations and agencies. They not only came and put a big sign out in the parking lot near Wyndham High, in Wyndham High School's parking lot, but they also donated a bunch of gift certificates to us. Laura took this beautiful picture, but we will be moving those out to staff members in a bunch of different ways. So we want to say thank you to the Essential Superheroes for their donations. Some of you might recognize Jordy from, he's a graduate from 2020. He was part of a video that QVCC did for, in advanced manufacturing. So we appreciate Jordy. Who is enjoying all the skills that he learned at Wyndham High School out in the manufacturing world. We've successfully closed the Compañeros and STEM Academy lottery. So we are, we're in good shape in both, in terms of both of those lotteries have been done and we took a little bit of the lottery back over from where it was at East Con and we hope to fully take it over. I know, Mark, you're interested in seeing us do that. We hope to fully take it over in the next year or two to manage the mall in-house. So it's one of our goals, but we, we did a half, this, half of it this time on our own. Natchahuck School had a personalized video message from Senator Chris Murphy, all about resilience. So it was nice. The kids got to listen to his message. I, one of our board members knows this young man. We're celebrating.
And he is standing with her right now.
Oh, yeah, there he is.
Him in the picture.
Andrew, how are you? So he, as part of his Eagle Scout project, built this on the Barrows campus and we appreciate his craftsmanship and the fact that he was able to pull off this. He gave something to the campus that was necessary because the, the terrain is really unusual on the Barrows campus. So we appreciate Andrew.
Okay.
Thanks, Andrew. If you weren't able to see the staff members who identify as Black or African American, we celebrated them on our district website. And this is just one example of the bios they wrote and the pictures they took. So it's still on the website if you'd like to see it. And I, I think it's an amazing way to celebrate Black History Month by celebrating the people that are in your organization and identify as Black or African American and the things that they value and the contributions they're making. Another shout out to North Wyndham School. In honor of Women's History Month, they had Dr. Sandra Hughes as a guest reader in one of their PTO virtual reading nights, talking to our students about futures in medicine. Love to hear that. So kudos to North Wyndham School. I also want, it's not in this celebrations, but I do want to recognize the visual and performing arts and PE teachers at Wyndham High School because they were visited by the Commissioners Network on March 19th, which was a difficult week for the high schools, many of you know, and they got glowing reviews, glowing feedback about their instructional practices, which has been a common theme from the Commissioners Network this year. So kudos to Wyndham High School. Keep up the good work. All right, now I'm going to shift gears because, and bring you up to speed, I'm going to share a different screen. All right, can you all see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to start off tonight, the usual, going to give you the update on COVID, going to give you the update on the district's IT and IT needs and next steps. Going to talk a little bit about some changes to the travel advisory that have just recently come about, like in the last day. And just give you an overall view of how we hope to get the district back to five days of in-person learning in May. I am going to start off with the IT updates and I know I saw Dave, there's Dave. There he is. So Dave is the Director of Instructional and Information Technology for the district and he's going to walk us through updates. And I know Lynn, you said you wanted to do the presentation. So do you want, do you want the same to apply to the IT slides or will there be questions in the middle or how do you want to run it? I know the board has a lot of questions about IT.
Why don't we go through the IT section and then stop, pause and get questions there? Does that make sense?
Sounds good. So Dave, I'm going to hand it over to you and let you run the show.
Okay, everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So hello, everyone. I just want to run through some of the priority one improvements that we're looking to push forward within the district. So first on the list is a district firewall upgrade. The plan is to be moving to a higher capacity firewall, which will allow for better security for students and staff. It will allow us to take full advantage of higher internet speeds. Currently, the current firewall that's in place can only utilize about 20% of the available bandwidth that is assigned to the district. So other districts we've seen just from polling have had, experienced similar issues with internet connectivity and slowdowns and they are also going through firewall upgrades as we're planning. Next on the list is a storage area network, so SAN for short, upgrade. The current SAN which handles the backend data for district servers and virtual desktops has been end of life and end of support. The plan is to replace those units with two higher capacity SANS that will allow us for year-over-year growth of about 15% for data storage needs. Third on the priority one list is a backup system implementation. The district currently has no dedicated backup system designed with disaster recovery in mind. The plan is to implement a backup system with cloud storage that will allow for disaster recovery and the quick recovery of services using a cloud provider, whether it be Amazon Web Services, Microsoft or Google, Google Cloud Platform. So those are some of the priority one upgrades we're working on there. Plan future IT improvements would be a phone system replacement. The current phone system that's in use within the district has been out of support since about 2016. The working plan will be to review a new system that would be chosen for the Wyndham High School Improvement Project and look to roll that out within the district as a whole. Next, we would be looking at virtual private network, otherwise known as VPN implementation. Currently, there's no individual secure VPN in use in the district to access resources from outside the network beyond using a virtual desktop infrastructure, which is currently in place. The new firewall that we expect actually comes with full VPN capabilities. So we would be able to kind of take care of two issues with one device. And eventually that, having a VPN in place would eliminate the need to use the virtual desktop environment. Future plans would also be to replace the aging virtual server host infrastructure with a hybrid cloud solution. So the virtual server infrastructure is what powers, again, some of the virtual desktop environment, but also all the servers that are in use for different applications within the district. The server hardware running the district's virtualization infrastructure is nearing the end of life. So we're going to begin the planning process for switching out that infrastructure. Hardware replacement would utilize a hybrid cloud infrastructure, which would help strengthen the district server environment and disaster recovery capabilities. So again, it would be a combination of servers that would be onsite and servers that could be spun up in the cloud. And then finally, we'd be looking at, hey, phasing out the virtual desktop infrastructure. The current virtual desktop configuration is running a, an outdated operating system and platform. The current hardware that's in the district does not have the capacity to handle any type of upgrade. And with one-to-one device capabilities within the district and aging infrastructure, it makes sense to work towards phasing out VDI's. We would work towards the implementation of VPN capabilities for staff with the need to access internal resources, combined with the laptops and other devices that they have to access our internal infrastructure. So that is an IT update.
Okay, well, thank you. So now if board members have any questions regarding IT, that would be the time to speak up. Mark and then Jaime.
Yeah, a couple of questions, David. I go back to the Pony Express and Carry a Pigeon era, but at one point we were doing fiber optics for the whole system. And we dropped the fiber optic connection between schools.
No, fiber optic connections are still within place. And that is between schools being provided by Charter Spectrum.
Okay. And just upgrading all of our firewalls and whatnot, is that going to keep, are the student equipment going to keep pace with that so they can access, because a lot of the problem is them accessing our, our systems.
Yes. So this is going to bring a higher capacity system, more memory, better processing power and the ability to take advantage of higher speeds. So in, in the end, it would allow for better connectivity.
Okay. So Johnny Stewart, Stewart students wouldn't have to run out and buy a new laptop to be able to
No, absolutely not.
So, and are we doing anything with our own hotspots and maybe creating our own Wi-Fi hotspots within the particular schools to, to boost connectivity?
We do have wireless hotspots or connectivity with on all buildings within the district. So it's available within every classroom, every, really every area of the schools right now.
Okay. So what are the teachers complaining about losing connectivity within the classrooms? What, what's causing their problems?
We would have to do some investigation into that, just to, to see what the specific issues may be.
Okay. I thought that's what we were, had done was, that's why we're doing all these improvements is because you did that investigation.
Well, anything specific to a Wi-Fi individual incident, we would have to investigate on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. And are we using COVID money for, for any of these improvements?
Yeah, some of the, some of the money that we're using for IT does come from the SIR funds.
Yes, sir, or the COVID.
Or CARES. Thank you. A combination thereof.
Yep.
Right. Thanks Lynn.
Thank you. Jaime, do you have some questions?
I have to, I have to question, kind of a follow-up. How much are we spending this upgrading or improvement?
Neil, you want to take that?
So in total, not just what you see here, we, because of some of the, the budget circumstances for this year, we're currently dedicating some of the backup system stuff. Several hundred thousand dollars we dedicated to put improvements that actually some of them have been requested for several years out, but the budget money had never materialized. So since we actually had the money to do that, we figured this was the time to spend and in spite of all the connectivity issues that have been recently plaguing our district, we thought no time like the present. It should have been no time like five years ago or seven years ago, but we're, we're working on it.
So how much? Again, I guess I missed that. Are we spending on this specific improvement? The one that we're looking at?
Firewall?
Firewall, the storage. The firewall. VPNs, all of it.
He's asking about everything on this page, everything on this page.
Yeah, right.
Dave, do you recall when you put all the lists together, the, the ballpark total amount? I know it's a couple million. I just don't know the exact.
About two millions. I just, you know.
Yeah, it was in that, that range. I unfortunately don't have the specific numbers in front of me.
Could we, could we get them? Could we get a breakdown, please?
Sure. In fact, I'll text read you right now. I know she'll be able to pull it up.
And once we do this, then we say that the system is being updated and upgraded and then it will be up to date.
So.
Once we complete this, what we have on the screen.
So I'll let Dave follow up to this, but how I would just say is, yes, it'll definitely be updated and upgraded, but this should always be a continual process, like any major system. You're looking to continue, like, so the priority one is the stuff we're trying to take care of this year and the future improvements are things we're looking, once we get those priority ones in place, what we keep doing in the future. And Dave, go ahead and, and correct me if I'm saying that out of turn or something, but I think that's the gist of it.
No, that's, that's accurate.
Okay. So and how long will it take to do priority one?
So priority one is with the firewall, that's something that we are working on right now. And that is something that I would say we can turn, as soon as we have the device in hand, we can turn that around in a matter of days.
Which will be when?
We are currently, Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, processing the PO on that at this time?
It's, it's a, it should be processed as of today, if not tomorrow.
There's a transfer tonight related to that.
Yeah.
Okay. But where will this be placed? By your priority one improve in a month or in a week?
What, so I, so it depends when we receive the equipment, but I feel like within a month seems like a safe, safe timeframe, but I'm anticipating sooner.
I agree with that. Yes.
Okay. But like, I don't want to say like two days, I don't want to say two weeks from Friday and then the equipment doesn't come.
It's a common theme nowadays.
So, but I feel month is a safe time to say it should be installed by then the firewall. We can update you at the next board meeting. We will update you.
Okay, thank you.
You, are there any other questions from board members?
Lynn, it's Tracy.
Go ahead, Tracy.
David, have you been contacted by the High School Renovators New Committee about the technology going into the renovated high school building? Because you alluded earlier to whatever the high school does in renovation will kind of follow along with. And I want to make sure that it's comprehensive and it's what you can use and envision and, and keep afloat.
Uh, yes, I've been on, I believe it's one or two meetings that have been in, that have been a part of that, that committee where we've met and discussed different technology plans, one of which was a to-be-determined phone system replacement.
Okay. Mary Galucci and I both sit on that committee. So if there's anything we can do to help you get the best plan and the best program, the best technologies, please don't hesitate to reach out, at least for me, and let me know. I'm sure Mary feels the same though. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Brendan, I just have to remark that I've been watching Brendan's body language all the way through this presentation and he's been like, you know, the things that we've talked about that have needed to be done for years, you could, you could feel it coming from Brendan. Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say that there's nothing here that surprises me because many of these things have been on my budget requests for years and cut out before the budget finally got approved. So I'm glad we're definitely finally moving forward on many of these things. It's all, there's nothing here that I wouldn't consider vitally important. My, my main concern is our sustainability. You know, much of this stuff that is on this improvement list was purchased in the 2012, 2013 timeframe with one-time monies for SPAC preparedness and Barrows implementing, you know, construction funds. I'm just afraid we're going to put ourselves in the same predicament where we go five, seven years without any investment in this when really we need to be investing in this all along to keep this stuff. So we don't hit a, you know, a firewall again, if you will.
One thing I could just say to that, I know that Dr. Youngberg has purposely, like, we've increased that area and some of the conversations, like you see the future improvements is around a long-term plan to continually put some money towards it so that that we don't run in or reduce the chances of running into some of the issues we experienced this year.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
And it's not only true in IT, it's true, it's true everywhere, especially with the new money the district's expected to receive under S or two and the American Rescue Plan. It's that feeling that we can finally have the things we need, but how do we sustain it when the money disappears? And it's, so it's everywhere in every department. So I, I totally agree with you. It's definitely a concern that we have to figure out between the town and the Board of Ed, how to, how to get there so that we are funding the things that need to keep us afloat. And this being one really important piece, especially now given what we know. Some of the stuff that we do virtually is going to never leave us now, right? It's a, it's a way, it's a very productive way for many of our students to get what they need, credit recovery wise and communication wise. So we absolutely need to continue doing the things we're doing. So I appreciate what you're saying, Brendan. Totally agree.
Thanks.
So I, I think that the pandemic has exposed baseline needs in a lot of areas and this is, this is one of them. And I don't think, I think, well, we may have an easier time educating the Board of Finance and the public about this issue, why we're investing in it now seems to make sense to a lot of people, but moving forward, why we can't go back. And I think that's a good point that was made earlier. So. Any other questions? Tracy Youngberg?
No, I just didn't know if you want me to keep going or if there are other.
I just want to make sure there are no more questions, especially from like Mary or anybody who I can't see. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go forward and, and thank you, Dave, for your presentation today. It's nice to have you with us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. All right. So you've all seen this data. I just added the fact that we are going to be getting our second doses. The Wyndham Public School employees are getting dose number two on either March 31st, April 1st or April 3rd. And we made April 1st, which is the Thursday before Good Friday into an asynchronous learning day so that we could anticipate or we could not have to worry about trying to effectively supervise kids in a building when there's the likelihood, according to DPH, that 20 to 25% of our staff could have flu-like symptoms and not be able to come into work. So 20 to 25% of those numbers, the number of vaccines that were provided in March. It's a, it's a significant number of our staff members. So having two asynchronous days is a way for us to avoid having to worry about how are we going to man those classrooms. Oops, there we go. Tonight at five o'clock, I had another meeting with the Governor's Task Force and the State Department of Public Health and they had some positive things to say and some things they wanted us all to continue to focus on. So the deaths due to COVID across the state are declining and the hospitalizations at this point, they feel they have stabilized. They believe that vaccinations are clearly helping in, in both of these departments because the most vulnerable people, which tend to be our elderly and those with pre-existing health conditions have indeed at least received the first dose, possibly the second dose of vaccine. The state is still working really hard to track the variants. They want everyone to continue, continue to focus on all the mitigation strategies. They're happy to report that they're supposed to be getting an increase in vaccine allocations, which they hope is going to happen just in time for when they open up the general availability, which is scheduled to open up on April 5th for anyone who's 16 years or older. They did mention that the age groups that where they're seeing increased cases right now are the 20 to 29-year-olds and 30 to 39-year-olds. They also recommended not traveling for leisure. And if you do have to travel and they, again, Uh, and if you do have to travel, and they again recommended not traveling, um, they want to make sure that everyone, uh, should say refer, it looks like I said defer, so there's a typo right there, refers to the state's travel guidance. Um, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that on the next slide. But, uh, overall, generally positive, uh, updates, uh, from the State Department of Public Health. But they're still, you know, cautiously optimistic, um, watching carefully, they, they understand the, the, uh, the interplay between the number of people vaccinated and the cases. And, and we are, we're, we're in a good place right now, but we're still not out of the woods, which is the basic message tonight. So for those of you on the call who are, uh, Wyndham Public School employees or board members, you saw that I put out an email on Friday. And the email had a very specific travel advisory that the district was going to, uh, implement when the governor's executive order was no longer in effect. But after several conversations with the board's attorney and conversations with local superintendents and our local health district, it was decided that the Wyndham Public Schools will not have a separate travel advisory. So in other words, we will be following the state's recommendations moving forward. Um, I'm going to put all of those recommendations out, uh, in a formal email tomorrow morning. But essentially, what the, what the attorney warned us of, um, is that if the local health district is not requiring our school district to maintain the travel advisory, um, we would be in a difficult position trying to have a stricter version of the travel advisory than the state of Connecticut currently has in place. So that we spoke directly to the local health district and they are not comfortable telling us to keep the travel advisory different from the state's recommendations. It's actually the state's guidance, they use the word guidance because there are no requirements. It's just the state's guidance. So without the local health district backing us up, we're going to leave, our guidance is going to be the same as the state guidance moving forward. So more to come. I'll put, I'll spell that out in the email tomorrow, but I wanted the board to know that I have had several conversations all about the travel advisory since then. So I don't know if there's, you want me to wait? Or you want me to answer travel advisory questions or keep going?
I think you should keep going through your full report about COVID and then we'll go back.
Okay, this is just a visual, you know, we're tracking it student attendance in every way, shape and form imaginable. Again, this is a visual, a visual between November 27th and March 12th, or the weeks of November 27th and March 12th. Um, and in every instance, you can see that in-person attendance is always higher than virtual attendance. So the students come to school more often when there's bodies in front of them. I think that people understand that, but I just wanted to show you in a visual that we know that in-person learning, uh, is something our students enjoy more than virtual learning and they show up more often. So we've been tracking that data along with a whole lot of other data because we really do want to make sure every single student is logging in, whether they have chosen to be virtual learners or whether they're in-person learning at this point. We want to account for every single student in the district. Uh, this is, uh, the case rate data, the, on the left-hand side of the screen is what I showed you at the last meeting. Uh, the top 10 districts in the state of Connecticut and their case rates per 100,000. Uh, on March 10th, Wyndham had a case rate of 16.8 and they were 83rd out of 169 districts. Move over two weeks on the right-hand side of your screen, it's a different set of, uh, the top 10. The one thing I can tell you and you all can see is the case rates have dropped significantly across the state. So the highest case rate now is only 40.6 cases per 100,000 as compared to 85 two weeks ago. Uh, so the numbers are, are moving in the right direction. Wyndham is now, now has a case rate of 15 and we are now 108th out of 169. So it is really nice not to have Wyndham in the top 10, uh, or anywhere near the top 10. So I'm very happy about that, um, and that all the case rates appear, the case rates appear to be dropping across the state. We wanted to continue in that direction for sure. This is our data as of today at about 1:45. Um, we have 27 staff members who are currently in quarantine or isolation. And we have 83, oop, um, this is, I'm going to switch this right now, give me one second. This is not accurate. I gotta get people to proofread, give me one sec. This should say.
You mean you don't want any of us taking a screenshot of it and sharing it?
Yeah, because that would be bad, I, the numbers are in the wrong spots. I am so sorry about that. All right, now they're right.
Is this where Neil does a shuffle for us?
He could. Oh, I don't know what that is, Neil. All right, can you guys, I don't know what happened to my screen here.
It's here, we can see it.
I just want to make a big. Okay, now we're back to where it's supposed to be. All right, for the students, we have 83 students in quarantine or isolation, 55 in quarantine with one of those being virtual, 38 in isolation with three of those being virtual. The reason why there's such a high number of students right now is we currently have three full classrooms quarantined. This is not surprising, although I know it does alarm people. But when you move to an environment where there's less than six-foot social distancing, since DPH continues to require schools to quarantine, to, you know, consider anyone within the six-foot boundary for 15 minutes or longer as a close contact, it's going to keep happening unless DPH changes their, their recommendations. But so we do have a considerable number of students in quarantine, as I said, three full classrooms and a few others. Uh, staff members were up to 27 in quarantine. Um, and you can see the total, uh, positive cases since September, as well as the resolved cases, uh, since September. I'll just give you a second to let that data sink in. Again, one of the things that I mentioned, um, to the, the, the school that had the first set of, uh, classrooms quarantine, which was North Wyndham School, I mentioned to the staff that I know that it might be alarming to them because it hadn't happened in our district until this week at that school. And so I know that people get concerned. But what I do know from talking to superintendents across the state who have opened their doors long before Wyndham has, is these quarantines end up being, uh, have ended up so far being just true inconveniences, but they don't result in positive cases for whatever reason. And knock on wood, because we want that to be the case here in Wyndham. Um, but we're required to do it, even if it doesn't, um, result in additional positive cases. It's something that the school's required to do. So I know it might have been alarming when it first happened, but, um, we're just doing what we've been told to do to try to reduce the risk of spreading the virus. This is just the calendar of the next eight or so weeks, uh, showing where, where we're getting our second doses and the asynchronous days, uh, as well as when we're going to make the shift as a district. Right after spring vacation, we've maintained two asynchronous Wednesdays. Done that for a couple of reasons, um, probably most important is that the DPH continues to talk about a potential surge in cases as a result of people maybe not following mitigation strategies during spring vacation. So if we leave the two asynchronous days in place and don't increase, um, the, the number of days we're in the building, we sort of give ourselves a little bit of wait time. Uh, then I built in some early dismissals to try to give our staff members back some additional time. But then we jump, then we're jumping in to four full weeks of five days a week school. So I think that's really important that our kids have, um, the normalcy of being in school Monday through Friday. I hope by then, there's a, a much larger percentage of people who are vaccinated that will give a little more than a month's time, about six weeks' time, since they open up the general availability of the vaccine. Um, so we should be in better shape, uh, if, as DPH keeps telling us, the more people that are vaccinated, the better off we're going to look when they keep looking at our state numbers. Uh, so my feeling is this gives us four weeks of Monday through Friday school. Um, right before we end the school year, uh, and then we'll be, you know, preparing for our summer programming. But this is what we've rolled out to the staff so far and what I hope, as long as everything goes well. And obviously, I continue to attend all the DPH calls. And, and follow the directives of the local health district and all the, uh, agencies that are helping support us through COVID. Just letting you know, there were no new submissions on the COVID, COVID compliance forum. So what's up here on the screen is the same thing you saw two weeks ago. I have no new information to share, but that, just to remind people on the call, if you're concerned about anything in our schools or offices related to COVID compliance, there is a form and a process for you to report secretly or not so secretly, if that's how you so choose. Just letting the board know that there's going to start being some, uh, advertising around, uh, summer programming. I'm thinking about summer programming.
Dr. Youngberg, maybe we could stop here before we start talking about summer programming and answer any questions related to COVID.
Sure.
Thanks. Anybody on the board have any questions? Did I see Mark?
Yes, Lynn, thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
I, I feel like I should know this, Dr. Youngberg, but I, I can't bring it to mind. So let me ask you, what is the state's doing for their truancy reporting in, in terms of, have they loosened their standards? Or are we, how are we handling truancy reports and, and, and calling parents to account for kids not attending school?
So each of our schools, um, has a plan that they're trying to reach the kids that are not coming. And we have some kids that we are not able to locate. Um, so they have a combination of things going on, phone calls, uh, visits to homes. They each have sort of their own plan and they know the goal is to try to get as many kids as we can back to school. Um, I'm, I don't actually know that the answer, Mark, if the state has, has reduced their truancy requirements, I know that we're still required to track attendance in multiple ways. I don't, I know Neil's on the call and he's usually my attendance guy. I don't mean to put him on the spot because I'm not sure he has the answer either, but.
So, so we're, 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 we track attendance and now like, they really don't, they don't use the term truancy in sort of the terminology anymore. It's really, the main terms are, are chronic absenteeism, which is 10% of, of membership days. Like so if a student's here 180 days, if they're absent 18 or more days, they're considered chronically absent. And then some other, um, uh, soft metrics we use are daily attendance rates, uh, which is some of the information that, uh, Dr. Youngberg was sharing. So as far as I know, we're still monitoring it. I don't think the chronic absenteeism next year is going to hurt us in terms of accountability. But our chronic absenteeism is exceedingly much higher than it was before the pandemic.
Okay, so we're, we're still tracking, we still are trying to enforce the, the attendance and.
Yeah, we. The, the best of our ability, we try to get students to attend whether virtually or in person. And even the rules for measuring when an attendance day is slightly different now that we have the two, we have virtual students and in-person students. But there is effort to, um, get students to attend. And then the second level of that is not just attend, but be engaged. Because just like in regular class, if I went to my algebra class, right, and put my head down, I'm present, but I'm not engaged in the class, so there's two levels of it. So not just showing up to a Google Meet, but actually participating in the work. Which isn't part of the chronic absenteeism is what we ultimately want.
And right now, the state hasn't made any declaration as to whether they'll hold us against us or how the state's going to, we're still waiting to hear.
There, there seems to be, at least for next year, it seems to be no penalty for it, like they'll probably report it. But, um, as far as I know, the accountability index won't exist next year, so it won't hurt us. But we're going to have a, a pretty steep baseline to decrease from if, if the trends continue. Which I know we're going to have a much higher rate.
Yeah.
I can tell you that.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
I can tell you that the superintendents of the Alliance districts are very worried about what Neil was just saying, that somehow the, uh, effects of COVID are going to be held against us. Because obviously, um, areas like Wyndham and other, uh, inner cities or, or places that struggle with some of the same things that inner cities struggle with have a very different, will have a very different outcome, uh, as a result of COVID than say your suburbs and more wealthy areas in the state. So Alliance District Superintendents are regularly talking about how concerned we are. Um, that first of all, it'd be very difficult for the state to, um, implement their accountability index, given that everyone has had a different, uh, different set of case rates, a different response, a different number of weeks. They went virtual, uh, different resources, uh, different staffing structures. I mean, we can go into how many different things would make it incredibly difficult for us to level the playing field and, and use this information against us. It sounds like they hear us, they hear the Alliance District Superintendents, and they're not planning to, to do, like Neil said, uh, to have the accountability index in place next year. I don't know about years after that, but I, that's at least what they're saying now, that they recognize that some districts have a much deeper hole to dig out of than others.
And, and the last thing I'll say too, I, I can make the argument that I think our, our principals and leaders and family engagement teams and teachers, they have had the most tremendous effort ever in trying to engage our families and increase attendance and have done a, an incredible job. It may not look so when you see the results, but the effort they've done to get what we have in our classrooms is, is been amazing. Thank you, that's a good question.
Yeah, I, I have no doubt the staff is working extremely hard to get those kids engaged, especially the before and after school staff people who I know are at the Family Resource Center, so that's, I understand.
I see Katina has her hand up, right?
I just wanted to make a quick comment about the attendance, uh, through the, uh, Wyndham Task Force. DCF is reporting that is all over the region, the, the calls that they are getting are of truancy or, you know, chronic absenteeism. Uh, so it's not only us, but all the districts are reporting high levels of, um, absence, absences.
Thank you, Katina Ilte, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is you, uh, Dr. Tracy, you said that kids are missing, still missing. So how are they missing? You can't find them, their families don't know where they are. I just, I just want some clarity.
Sure, so there are some kids that haven't shown up for school, whether it be virtual or in-person. And we visited homes and perhaps they're not living in the places we believe them to be living. So technically, they're missing in, in that we don't have the latest information about where they might be.
Okay.
So we have examples like that across the district of kids not being where we believe they should be, their residence-wise or coming to classrooms.
Okay, thank you. One more question, um, how do you monitor the travel advisory? And you said that we, that Wyndham Public Schools has the same travel advisory as the state? Is that what you said?
So this, the governor, on March 19th, the governor took away his executive order that had a specific travel advisory that, that the state of Connecticut had put out. So that does not exist anymore. Instead, the state of Connecticut wants everyone to follow the CDC's recommendations. And you're right, it's very difficult to monitor. It's sort of like, um, the honor system, right? We're, we're telling you what we think you should do to, to be as safe as you can. And we're asking you to please follow the safety guidance. But you're right, it's virtually impossible to monitor.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments about that from the board about, uh, COVID-related report that Dr. Youngberg shared before we go to the summer school, summer program? Oh, Katina, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I, I saw on the slide, uh, the test. Um, what are we, the back test or, you know, the testing for the kids? Yes, uh, yes, that. What are we, what could we do to get the state to, um, eliminate that? I mean, like, I'm sorry, Dr. Youngberg.
Well, we talked about this at the last meeting, but, uh.
It doesn't appear we can do much of anything. We have made it known over and over again that our fear is that the results will show us that our kids have, many of our kids have lost ground, right? That's what we anticipate, not all of them, because I know that virtual learning has worked for some. Um, but it'll show that many kids have lost ground and that that would somehow, that information could somehow be used against us. That's not actually the way they're saying they want to use the data. They're saying they want the data to be used in a needs assessment format. So it'll give us some information about specifically where the kids are so that we can develop individual and grade level and school-based responses to where the kids are. But it doesn't sound like we're going to be able to do anything about giving those tests, uh, because it's part of the philosophy, um, of, well, our former commissioner and our current, that's what they believe in. They believe this is a way for us to actually pinpoint where the students are. And to some extent, I think that that, that is true. Our issue is that we, we are going to have to figure out how to get the kids, uh, who are not coming in person to test in a way that we're going to be able to say the results are reliable. And I think that's our biggest struggle, is trying to figure that out. Um, I can tell you that Wyndham, we have made a decision not to double test anyone. So it, since Sback is going to be a state requirement, we are not giving our own benchmarking system, our own benchmarking assessments for those same grades. So we're going to give them one test in the spring. If the state says it'll be Sback and NGSS, that, that's what it'll be. If the state tells us we, we're not going to do that state assessments, then we'll give our internal benchmarks, but we're not going to test the kids twice. So that's the only thing I can say we're trying to do on this end.
And, and also we've, we've purposely tightened the window. So the reason, normally, Sback takes almost all of May and half of April. So we've purposely put a tightened window and what we test is what we test and we're not going to, we're, this is a stressful year and there will be stress, I'm sure, but we're trying to make it as least stressful as possible. So we're trying to. So we're trying to not make it a six-week endeavor, for example, and trying to just move through it as quickly as possible because we're required to do it.
Thank you. I'm glad I asked.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we move on? So, so we're going to move to the summer programming, which is.
So I'm just, I'm giving you. I'm just giving you a little glimpse in what you're going to start seeing advertised from the district. I'm thinking about summer programming, programming over the next three years. So the summer of 2021, 22 and 23. I've already met with a committee of people interested in summer school, our summer school committee. We've already started, I think, you know, they have information about how we plan to roll summer school, at least big picture kinds of visions. We're looking at five days a week for a full week between July 12th and August 6th. It is an in-person experience. That's what we're planning for, an in-person experience. So people still have to be comfortable with that idea to take part in this. We specifically chose the four weeks on purpose. It allows for a couple of weeks off before the summer school starts and a couple of weeks after summer school is over. So people do, can see that if they were going to teach summer school, for example, or if they wanted to send their children to summer school, that they still can have some time to themselves. We are looking at Barrows as one of the sites and Wyndham Middle School. I have my facilities director is working on trying to figure out how we can get a couple of hallways at Wyndham Middle School air-conditioned so that we can offer the summer programming over the next few years. We're looking at an interdisciplinary project-based, an engaging, fun way to get at standards that will address learning loss and address standards in literacy, numeracy and social emotional development. We're looking at offering that kind of project-based learning to pre-K through incoming ninth graders. And in that, we're also looking at some kind of combination between academics and recreation or specials, if you will, for elementary folks. So that the kids will have PE experiences, art experiences. There may be some intramural sports play, some things that are going to engage kids, almost more like a camp-type situations that we can get them up and moving. We know a lot of them have not been moving this year, and so it should be physical development as well. We still will maintain our credit recovery summer school for grades 10 through 12 because we obviously know our kids need to get, make sure they have their high school credits to graduate on time. We're mandated to provide extended school year for our students with special needs. And we are still mandated by the state of Connecticut to offer a K-3 literacy program. So that will all be embedded in what we offer to our elementary kiddos. We have 35 Wyndham Public School staff members who are being trained in project-based learning over the spring break. They will be compensated because obviously that's their vacation time. Or at least the 10-month employees will be compensated. But it's kind of exciting because when I put out the potential to have a virtual professional development over spring break, I never imagined that there would be participants willing, you know, to be a part. I just didn't imagine I was going to get participation. Not only did I get the 35 I need to, to max out the virtual sessions, I got more than that. I had to go back to my principals and say, help me figure out how I move this, at least eight of these people into another session at another time, because there was so much interest. So that's really exciting. So project-based learning, I think, is going to be a huge change in teaching and learning for the district. Because if you can get at standards in multiple, from multiple content areas in fun ways, you're going to see your kids perform and be engaged in ways they haven't in the past. And you're going to make life a lot easier in terms of the teachers trying to get at everything from many different angles. I just think this is going to be a game changer. So I'm excited about summer programming and moving forward. Question, I know, I see Katina is like doing some little dance up there and the, got something going on, she's excited, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
So it's going to be formal.
I see some, I see some people clapping their hands.
Yeah.
It is, and this, this is being funded through, with the extra money we're getting.
Those are two funds, yes. This is part of our response, our learning loss response, starting as early as, as summer. But the, the project-based learning and the interdisciplinary work is something that I believed in for a really long time. And I think that this is the perfect opportunity to sort of switch gears a little bit and, and get our kids to a place where they're much more highly engaged in their learning. Teachers become facilitators, students are doing the, all the heavy lifting. And you're able to, to move achievement in a, in a, what I think is a much more natural way. So I'm excited about the changes in teaching and learning. And one of the things that I told the summer school committee is, one of the best ways or a way that you can instantly increase engagement and improve student achievement is if you let the kids have a little bit of fun. And there's actual brain research out there that says that, that our brains actually do a better job when we have fun than we do when we're stressed out. So we're going to have a little fun, like that's just going to be the way it is. So I'm excited about that.
So I have a question about capacity. What's, what's, what's our capacity for students that want to participate? I mean, so. We end up in a situation where, where we don't have enough capacity, so.
So we, we actually, we want to leave it open right now. It is true that what we're, what will limit our capacity is our ability to find adults who can support the classrooms, right? That's going to be, that's going to be the issue. We're, we met today to talk about how we're going to roll out the survey and registration forms to families. Basically, these, there's four full weeks where families could send their children to have this fun and academic and not-so-academic experience at no cost to them, which, and it will help the school system to get us back on track in terms of supporting these kids and, you know, reducing that learning loss. I, I, I can't say yet because I haven't posted the, the positions, but we're going to use the initial survey data to find out how many families do want to send their kids for these four weeks and then build out staffing from there. Obviously, I would love for all the staff members to be our own people. I think that's really important. But if that doesn't work and we don't have enough Wyndham Public School employees, then we'll look to hire else, you know, from other places, you know, post outside. I, I mean, I would love to see, the, the thing about summer school here in Wyndham is, I've been here since 2016. We've only offered ESY because we're mandated, credit recovery because we're mandated, and the K-3 literacy program. We've not offered in all the years I've been here so far, any other programming. So this could be a really popular thing. And you're right, I, we could end up trying to figure out, oh, we can only have, you know, we only got 100 teachers. That means we can only support 100, 1500 kids. And I'm just making up ratios right now. Although I would like to keep things no more than 51 to 15 adult-to-student ratios. So until I see the data from the parent survey, I, I don't know if I can answer the question. I know we have plenty of space. We can house about 600 kids at Barrows and the middle school is enormous. It's just the staffing that will drive whether or not, what our cap will be.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how happy I was here that, that fun's important because that's what Neil and I do for these meetings is we inject a level of fun. So good to hear that, that's important.
It's very true. And what people don't realize is there's real life brain research that they've proven it. I mean, I know most of us know it, you know it, that you much prefer to be somewhere where you can laugh and have fun, but they've proven it, like it's real. All right, I just wanted to show you, I wanted to give everyone a little glimpse of the new and improved Wyndham High School Portrait of the Graduate. It's actually, I think it's beautiful and my favorite is the whip it in the constellation. I just think that the artist who did this just knocked it out of the park. I wanted to show you this. So this is the portrait of the graduate. This is the work that we imagine is, is taking place in the district from earliest, our tiniest little kiddos, Wyndham's Early Childhood Center, straight through our elementary and our middle school, and of course, until they walk across the stage at Wyndham High School. These are all the skills that we believe that they need to, to meet the requirements of a, you know, to meet our Portrait of the Graduate at Wyndham High School. All the, the, the skills, whether they be specific content skills or social emotional skills, organizational skills, those kinds of things, so that they can be successful in college, in career and in life in general. If you'll notice in this new and improved visual, we have the three pathways of the high school. And I just, I sort of just want to make sure everyone is aware that there's all this work going on behind the scenes to get these pathways up and running and to provide these experiences for our kids before they leave high school and put them in a position where they can take additional courses specific to their pathways, get them prepared for college, get them prepared for a specific career. It's all sort of happening behind the scenes. It's also aligned with, with the, you know, the raised graduation requirements. And at the same time, there's all this work behind the scenes because we're building a new high school. So this is like a really exciting time because all of the work that's happening is going to, there's going to be a new building for all this to happen in, in just a few short years. That, in addition to the fact that we are lucky enough to be receiving some of these post-COVID response funds, it's a really exciting time. And I just, I, I just want everyone to know that I'm really excited about being able to lead some of the change and some of the things that are happening in the district. Because there's some things that are going to happen here over the next few years that are unprecedented. They haven't happened in decades and maybe ever before. So it's like buckle up because there's some amazing things about to happen. And, and I, I think we have a lot of extremely talented people who are going to make things even better for the kids at Wyndham. So I'm just excited. I want the board to know that I'm excited about a bunch of things. And it keeps me up at night because it's exciting and daunting all at once. But we're, we're in a good place right now and we just have to figure out how to plant the right seeds so that it's sustainable. So I'm just, I wanted everyone to know that this is a visual representation of all that I'm excited about.
And I do see the whip it down there in the right hand corner, bottom.
So if you remember, the Portrait of the Graduate was just a flower visual. And we appreciated the work that the team did when they chose the flower and the petals. But to me, this just speaks to something way, you know, much more improved from the flower. And it's, like I said, the visual representation of all the work that's going on behind the scenes. It's neat.
Who created this?
This is the artist, the graphic artist who helped us put together the budget book. Lori, what's her last name, Janet? Sorry, yelling at Janet outside my office. Is it Tadashi? Okay, Lori, Lori Tadashi is the graphic artist, incredibly talented. And we will continue to do business with her because she produces some beautiful things. You saw our budget book? We gave her the template and she gave us the art design. So definitely not my forte, but I'm happy to work with her because she's talented.
Mark?
Yeah, where are we going to be using this? Are we going to promote this?
So.
In newspapers or the graduation book or where are we going to use this?
So the Portrait of the Graduate is, again, the visual representation of all the work that's going on in the district. So you're going to see it in our strategic planning, you're going to see it in possibly on posters in our schools. The whole district is a part of this. This is, you know, Wyndham High School has the whip it there, but there will be a version for each of our schools. You might see it in, like you said, in the newspaper. It is, it, it's a way of communicating to the public about what our schools stand for and what our kids, what our graduates need and what we believe about our graduates.
We can bring us as a slide to the Board of Finance budget presentation?
It's actually already in my Board of Finance budget, the presentation I'm working on because they, I, they are going to be our partners in trying to figure out how to sustain all the amazing things that are going to happen in the next few years.
And are we going to be allowed to, to sample this? So I'm thinking, being a member of Dawes with Scholars, it might be something we co-op and, and use to promote scholarship for high school kids.
I, I can see it being used in many different ways because of the way she designed it. It just, it really speaks to, it's much better than the flower.
There won't be any copyright issues or anything if we, if we co-op.
No, the way she works is, and, and I, her prices are incredibly reasonable because you know I don't like spending money. She, she has given us back all the work that she's done. So we now own it, it's ours. We get, she creates it for us, just like the budget book, and then she gives us back the template. So if anyone's looking for graphic artists, I'm, I'm putting in a little plug for her because she really is wonderful to work for and you end up with the, with the versions that she's created, they're yours.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, comments? Just checking to make sure I don't miss Mary in case she has anything. Mary, I'm assuming you will speak up if you have a question.
Not yet.
Okay. So thank you very much. I don't see any more hands, so we'll move on.
All right.
I was just thinking when you were giving those presentations that I can't imagine if we tallied up all the hours that have been spent by your office preparing for COVID-related reports.
It's actually gotten, I gotta tell you, because we do them so often, it's gotten easier because you just update the previous information.
Right. You think about all the time we spend at board meetings, thinking and talking about it too. It will be very refreshing when we can start to move away from that. That's why it's nice, was nice to hear about the summer programs, so. Now we're on to committee reports. If there are reports, I'm going to run through with each of you, see whether there's anything to give folks a report on. Mark for finance and audit?
Yeah, there were three basic items, the, one of which is on the agenda, that is the approval of the budget transfers that, that you, you are in your board packet. The other thing we talked about, and it doesn't really need a board vote, but we're, based on Rita's recommendation, we're, we're using a 6.25 interest rate return for our pension, Board of Ed Pension Fund. And that was just a calculation on how the market's been going. And that was based on Rita's, so that'll be, that's already, I think, been in, put into our budget presentation. And the only other thing that came up was whether we should ask the town to make some, start making some consideration on looking at alternate health plans or alternate health programs. There seems to be some, there would seem to be some feeling that perhaps self-insured may or may not be the way to continue. So that's the only, those are the three recommendations that came out of the, of the committee.
Are there any questions on that?
Can I just add something?
Go ahead, Rita.
Pension is going to be voted on, but next, we're going to put it on next board meeting agenda on what, on what we, you know, need to, how we need to invest next year's contribution. But the presentation will be in next board meeting.
Okay. I'm going to put it on my list for next meeting. And, and Mark's reference to the health plan is whether or not we explore getting a different plan through the state rather than being self-insured. And that's something we'd have to do in concert with the town. And so I, I'm going to put that, we're not going to talk about that this evening right now, but that was what Mark was referring to. I didn't want the employees to be hearing that and say, oh, we're, they're going to dumb down our health plan. Of course, we can't do anything without the unions signing off on it anyway, so.
Right, well, we, we, we were going to, and we'll talk about it at the next, at the next meeting, I guess. We were, it wasn't a foregone conclusion that we'd switch. We would just, it's time to reevaluate and look at what's the best option for our employees.
Right. Any other questions on finance?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mary.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to check again about, you know, are we okay regarding audits in the town? And can we make sure that we, I, I, well, I haven't heard anything from Tyler or the Board of Finance. So I really just want to keep up with that and make sure we don't suffer if there are delays on the other side.
Mark, do you want to answer that? We did talk about this.
It was something we talked about and I, and I didn't bring it up because I thought it was something we were waiting to get some information from Tyler. And, and so it's definitely something that was, that's, that's on the agenda and definitely something, Mary, that is a concern. We're just waiting to do it through the channels, through talking with Tyler and, and, and the Board of, and the, the economic people. We'll keep you, and it'll be an agenda item again for the next finance committee meeting and we'll, we'll stay on top of it. Because it is causing some problems for us.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Next, we have school planning and design, Tracy.
Haven't met since the beginning of the month. We meet the first Thursday of each month, so I have a second report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. That's what I thought. Policy Committee?
We too have not met, but we're meeting tomorrow and we will have a report for you during the next board meeting. Thank you.
The Executive Committee is meeting on the 7th of April. And I'll be putting together an agenda for that. And if anybody has anything they want to talk to me about, we can certainly do that offline. I just do want to mention that next Wednesday. next Wednesday, the 31st of March, will be the Board of Ed presentation of our budget to the Board of Finance. So that meeting will be happening next Wednesday at 7:00 PM and we will be sending out the link to, anybody can, can watch it, but the Board of Ed members, Tyler wants to make sure we can be in the meeting. You know, rather than just observing it, so that will be happening next Wednesday, the 31st, 7:00 PM. And then Dr. Youngberg and I just went back and forth with Tyler Griffin, who's the Chair of the Board of Finance, about a follow-up meeting with them after they hear our presentation to come back and respond to questions. You know, the way that we did it before was that they would get a chance to let it sink in and then maybe wanna talk to us about more things. And that, at this point, is going to be, we haven't heard confirmation on it, but at this point is gonna be April 14th at 7:00 PM, so there's a potential that we'll be going back to them on the 14th. One thing I wanna mention to everybody is that because of the COVID protocols still in place, it is not clear yet whether there will be a referendum or whether the Board of Finance will be voting on the budget without a referendum as they did last year during COVID. So we'll have to wait and hear from the Chair of the Board of Ed, I mean, of the Board of Finance about whether or not it will go to referendum or whether the Board of Finance will be approving a budget. So, stay tuned for that. There's one complicating factor that just came up within the past week, which is since the federal government extended the tax filing deadline to May 17th, the state has now extended their tax filing deadline to May 17th. And normally the legislature does not like to finalize a budget and tax package until they have a sense of what the tax revenues that have come in are going to be, so they often wait until after the April returns are in to get a report from the state. So there's a little bit of confusion now at State Capitol about whether or not they'll be able to pass a state budget by the last day of the legislative session, which is the second Wednesday in June, like I think it's the 9th. And there's some talk about having to go into a special session, so as you can imagine, this is gonna throw the municipalities into a little bit of craziness and so I'm just putting that out there, not to freak people out, but just to say I learned this yesterday. And so, we'll just stay tuned, you know, we're gonna do our job and present a budget, a really good budget with a really good presentation next week and whether or not we have to convince just the Board of Finance or the voters, we'll have to stay tuned on. Any questions on that?
Just that, we really have to keep an eye on it because if the legislature doesn't approve the budget, then that pushes the high school renovation project back even further because we're waiting on, in this June to send out our contracts to get them signed and start the construction this summer, so let's just keep an eye on that if we will, please.
Yes, we, I, I, well, in my job, I keep an eye on it, but, so I will definitely keep you informed, Tracy, if I hear anything new. I mean, this is just the rumor mill at the Capitol right now, but but just knowing the way they operate. Of course, they don't wanna be around during the summer either, so, you know, maybe.
Maybe that's a good motivator.
And it's just so crazy because you can't talk to any of them in person, so. Anything else? Oh, anything from the Ad-Hoc Elementary School Consolidation Committee?
Well, we're gonna be meeting next Tuesday at 6 o'clock and the contract has been signed and agreed upon with Friar and they will be attending some of our meetings, which is gonna be great. We also have received some staff names who have wanted to join the committee and I send my gratitude to them and hoping to get maybe a few parents or community members to, to sit on the committee as well. But we will be meeting next Tuesday at 6 o'clock.
Are there any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Paula. Thank you, everybody, for all your work on the committees and now we're on to discussion items. So this is like a very general thing and it may or may not take very long, but I'm, I'm beginning to come out of the, the COVID cloud and thinking about the rest of this year and the things that we want to accomplish and talk about and learn about at the board level. So I just wanted to open it up to the board members for a few minutes to see whether there are any topics that you'd like more education about, learning about, you know, we can figure out workshop sections of meetings to do some, you know, roll up the sleeves and learn about something. The nice thing about these remote meetings, and I know eventually we'll go back to in-person meetings, but it's very easy to get guests to come speak to us because they don't have to travel. So are there things you'd like to learn about? There are things that we could be unpacking as a board with help from committee members such as the 10-year master plan, you know, what goes into that, what kind, you know, sort of we could be sharing with the school consolidation, the Ad-Hoc Consolidation Committee, thoughts on things of that sort. Mark referred to the health plan options, whether or not we want to move into a different kind of health plan that may be more predictable with cost. What the, what the pros and cons of that are. Any sort of discussions around strategic plan and, and framework and we also need to remember that we do have a retreat on our calendar on September 10th and 11th. And we, we can also be thinking about things that we might wanna be focusing on in our retreat. So I'm encouraging folks to sort of speak up with any ideas so we can plan. Mark and then Katina.
Thank you, Lynn. It's, I, it's a pragmatic type question. My, I'm really curious about our textbook recycle, or, or cycle plan. I know, I think last year we, we had to postpone buying a series of textbooks because of money. I assume the COVID has wrecked havoc with consumables part of the textbooks in terms of what's being used and what was sent home for kids to play with, so I'm just wondering what you know, or maybe our five-year plan is for, for textbook acquisition and recycling and, you know, for math and, and reading and whatnot.
Okay. Yeah, this is just a brainstorm, put ideas out there and we can figure out how to time and seek time and sequence them. Obviously, working with the administrative staff on that. Anything else? Katina, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I would like to get a better understanding and knowledge about the technology that is actually needed and how to support the IT department in, you know, making progress and getting funded. It seems like it's so important, it doesn't seem, it is so important. So, and I would like to understand in English, you know, all that technological vocabulary and be able to be a good advocate.
So when you say to understand it, like how it's being used now, what we're doing with it now, what the future is.
Yes, what was needed in the schools, what are the, I'm sorry, my dog is barking.
They wanna learn about technology too. Anything else that people wanna put out there for Paula and then Jaime?
Thoughts about maybe in concert with the school consolidation, but certainly looking out over however many years, the idea of changes in the configuration of schools, the possibility of a K through 8 school, possibility of a themed school, maybe doing more as we're doing with our compañeros, perhaps with another topic. And certainly thoughts about where we might be going with an alternative school.
Okay. These are great. This is exactly what I wanted to be hearing, these kinds of things. Anybody else? I think Brendan had his hand, oh Jaime and then Brendan. Go ahead, Jaime.
Yeah, I like to kind of be updated, you know, know more about the new, the renovation of the high school.
We have a whole meeting, we have a whole meeting about that, Jaime, on April 7th.
But about aspects and how is it gonna be integrated? It's not just the renovation, but what are the plans? And I guess for this, Dr. Youngberg, do you show a free, the three pathways that you have, the business and technology, health sciences, and then how are these going to be integrated into the new building or the renovated building? What are the plans? How are they going to, to work together, okay? What? I haven't heard anything about.
You mean the Wyndham High School programmatic?
The Wyndham High School, yes.
I can actually send, Dr. Gomez, I can send you the latest head spec that sort of explains that because that's what they're using to develop the classrooms in the renovation plan, so.
But I think what I'm hearing is we wanna have a little, we wanna just like get a refresher on that.
Yeah, I mean, and then I like to see what the objective of each pathway is going to be, how it's gonna work, how it's going to be integrated into the new
Okay.
renovated building.
Do you wanna wait till September on that or do you?
Well, we're gonna figure, we're gonna figure out this timing.
Yes. Yeah, I can wait.
Go ahead, Jaime, go ahead, sorry.
No, I just wanted to answer the question. Yes, I can wait until September. But, you know, maybe at the retreat, at some point, you know, it'd be good to know more about all of these developments and the plans for the future. Because as it is, most people really don't know what's going to happen in this renovated high school, including myself. I mean, I have ideas and I know more or less, but not a specific. So that would be something that I would consider useful.
Okay. Yeah, just, Dr. Youngberg, I was just saying, before we make any promises about what we're gonna do during the treat, retreat, we have to consider all the requests and figure out how we're gonna time and sequence things. With your input.
I, I completely agree. I think we can answer Dr. Gomez's questions now. That's why I was asking, do you want this in a meeting in the next few weeks? Because we have the, we have that information of what we're planning to do and it's been communicated. I didn't want, I, I just didn't know if you were saying that was going on the list for the retreat or we should address that in the next couple months or something.
Whenever, I don't really
Okay.
Have a specific date.
Then we have Brendan and then Mary.
I just wanted to echo Paula's comment about, funny, more about our long-term goals for alternative programming because that seems to be one of those things that we constantly change directions in and it's one of the large cost driver in our budget, so a little more info on what the long-range plan there, I think would be helpful.
Okay. Thanks Brendan and Mary.
And Tracy also has her hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Sorry. Go ahead, Mary and then Tracy.
Yeah, some of this may be contingent on our facilities plan reports, but I would like to, you know, know more about the, you know, HVAC in the buildings and also outdoor spaces and perhaps, you know, since we were coming out of this awful pandemic and, and envisioning some new ideas, I loved the ideas about the summer camp type summer school, but really throughout the year, having more of a kind of nature focus for the students at all levels. Perhaps some gardening curriculum and nutrition associated with it, so just, just a kind of general idea of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Tracy?
I remember what I was gonna ask now. Since the beginning, oh, well, one of the things I was gonna ask about was we haven't done a formal evaluation of Dr. Youngberg. I know that that is different in electronic media, but she has worked here almost a year and a half as superintendent and I just, you know, I know July was her first official date, but she was interim before that. It's just something that we need to consider as a board and possibly for the newer people on the board, some training before that should look like and what's appropriate and what's not.
Okay, well, this is the top, this is the main topic of discussion at our April Executive Committee meeting. To figure out, I mean, we have to do the evaluation in the coming month or two. Like it's, it's coming up, I mean, we, we can't, we can't, so now we have to turn our attention to that. And maybe what we need to do is spend a little time with the board, you're right. Making sure everybody's on board for her. What's the, you know, protocol and appropriate way to do that, okay?
Thank you.
So we'll be hearing more about it at our, at our, after our April 7th meeting probably.
Thank you. 16 months so far, Trey, 16 long and wonderful months. No, and I'm, it wasn't a criticism, it wasn't a complaint, I'm just, to get done at some point, that's part of the three tenants of being a Board of Ed member, that policy and finance and I don't wanna fall down on that one leg. Because then we, in a little bit, so we know what happens when that doesn't go so well.
Right. Yeah, that's our plan. Mary, Mary is sort of the, has the process that we've all adopt, agreed to and we have the tool and so now we're gonna need to, you know, make it happen. So that's great. Thank you for putting that out front, Tracy. Anything else? So I don't see any other hands, but this gives me like a whole bunch of things to work on with the rest of you and we'll figure out how to make these things, how to meet these challenges and opportunities over the coming months and I'm really glad you shared so many great ideas so that we can figure out how to, how to make it happen. It's better that I'm asking now than in September, so. Thanks. So we're now on to action items, which is just one action, action item on the agenda today. Approval of recommended budget transfers that were sent to you in your board packet. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded by Tina, seconded by Paula. Is there any discussion? Do people have any questions? There are a number of them. I also like to mention that the chat is open for people who might wanna say something during public comment at the end of the meeting. Any questions, comments on the transfers? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neal?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the formal business of the agenda today. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment?
Looks like everybody's happy.
Or tired, who knows?
We're tired, can't think.
Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:30.
I move, we move.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:30, we'll be back together. And our next meeting will be to talk about the high school. Okay.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Mark, I like your suggestion. Thank you.